The Monday, September 13th, 2021 meeting of the Market City Commission is now called to order at 6:00 PM. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, roll call, please.
Commissioner Bonzal?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Hanley?
Here.
Commissioner Mayor?
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Here.
Mayor Protem Hill?
Here.
And Mayor Smith?
Here. Thank you. Commissioners, we have an agenda this evening. One note, we may want to consider moving item number three to the end of the agenda after City Manager comments, as that is a closed session, so that members of the public would not have to leave and come back to be able to have public comments or hear comments from us and the City Manager. Do we have a motion on the agenda? Commissioner Davis?
I move, we approve the agenda with the change of moving item three under comments from the City Manager.
Do we have a second? Protem Hill?
I second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven to zero. All right. I have no announcements this evening. That brings us to our first public comment session of the evening. Public comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when making a comment, and go ahead and approach the podium if you'd like to make a comment.
Hello, my name is Heather Holzner. I live at 521 West Bugg Street. I did email several of you, so several of you are already aware of my issue. Basically, I'll give you a history. When I moved into 521 West Bugg Street, I didn't have a hospital kitty corner to my southwest. I didn't have a co-op behind me. I didn't have a homeless shelter to my north. Sorry, my directions are messed up. You know, that's been a big change for us in our neighborhood, and I feel, I guess, that now it's kind of getting worse. You know, since, you know, there's screens getting busted out, belongings being thrown around. They're arguing, they're swearing, they're fighting, pushing each other into the street, panhandling. They stumble across my path when I'm on the bike path. They pass out across the, you know, away from me. They've approached me and my dogs inappropriately, you know. Oh, there's my support dog, you know, come up to me and approach me. I've had children with me that they've approached me with rude comments when they're in their little group over. I don't know if you're aware, there's a little shelter behind the gas station, some kind of old garage, and they'll be back there, and I'll hear rude comments as I'm passing by. And now the smell of pot constantly as I'm walking up and down the bike path. I've been walking a little bit farther, you know, I used to walk down to the lake. Now my walks have taken me all the way up to McDonald's, and that's where my most recent incident took place about 10 days ago. I was sworn at, obviously, he's not in his right mind, because he was telling me it was illegal for me to have my dogs. He was swearing at me, yelling at me. Contacted the police, they handled it very nicely. I had a chance to talk to Chief Rebold earlier today, and I wanted to let you guys know that the officers are doing, you know, I've seen them handling a lot of situations. I live right there. They're constantly in that area. They're doing a great job handling the situations. I understand it's a very unenforceable problem. I wanted to let you know that, though, that I believe the police are doing the best they can. I don't know what more can be done to help us enforce our safety in that area. I don't feel safe. I went and bought new locks. I went and bought motion sensors. I went and bought mace. I have a friend who will not walk that bike path without mace. She's been jumped at on that bike path. I talked to another gentleman who's had a similar experience. Now, I was yelled at because I had dogs. It was a little, he told me it was illegal for me to have my dogs on the bike path. I talked to another gentleman via email, and he said he was yelled at possibly, probably by the same gentleman, that he was biking on the bike path illegally. He was not allowing his bike on the bike path. I've talked to another, now, this is secondhand, a person who was approached to come help somebody who was in the bushes. And she, of course, just kept moving on. I know a person who bikes down with her family, and she says, I have a 13-year-old. She should be able to bike to the beach by herself. She can't do that. She won't allow her 13-year-old to bike on the bike path because it's not safe. She doesn't know who's out there.
Ms. Holzner, that is three minutes. I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
And just for the public's benefit, the Commission can respond to commission, to public comments during Commissioner comment, which is towards the end of the meeting. Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else for public comment this evening? Name and physical address, please. You'll have three minutes to speak.
Hi, my name is Bob Frack. I live at 332 Rock Street. Speaking on item number two, I was able to attend a zoning meeting initially where we had a good turnout. I was not able to attend the last City Commission meeting. I'm opposed to rezoning the entire three-quarters of the block into the multifamily use, or whatever it is they're going to call it. I don't understand how just three people or can decide the makeup or constitution of a neighborhood to change it from a quiet residential area into a multifamily zone. To that large of a, of your showing, rezoning. The, everybody that spoke at the first meeting, except for one person, was against it. I'm not against, I, I, my family struggles with rehabilitation, and I understand the need for that type of a facility. I just don't think that is the proper location for that type of facility. Even when the members of the board were speaking, they thought it was this building. It was on Barriga Street. They didn't understand that it was the bishop's residence. They were unclear as to whether there was three bedrooms or seven bedrooms, or why it wasn't multifamily in the beginning. It was just used as sleeping rooms for visiting priests. And, you know, that's what it's been used as all along. I mean, housekeepers used to live there. Some of the nuns used to stay there. It's my understanding now that it's not being used as the bishop's residence, and they're basically are looking for another way to create, I don't mean to put words in their mouth, but it is basically a way to create income. Federal government money is available now for rehab facilities like that. And it's my understanding that the Church wants to abandon the use of the building and find another way to repurpose it. At the meeting, even the employees of the Church were against rezoning. You know, the neighbors were made aware by the letter that's required by law. The parishioners being out of the area weren't made aware of the attempts that were being made. The school across the street, people were unaware, teachers, parents. No, nobody was really informed, and it just felt like it was trying to be kind of moved through rather quickly. If they wanted to rezone just that building, they said that they couldn't do it, that they had to do the entire lot, that they had to do everything that your church owned, and they could not re, without a trial and a hearing, rezone that for the type of use that they're looking at. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Hi, I'm John Fee, 125 West Washington. And I'm also the Communications Director for the Catholic Diocese. And so, I just wanted to speak on the property there in Barriga. First thing is, this was brought up at the last meeting, the recovery house is out. It's not going to happen there. The cost to refurbish the building to get it to spec, it's just beyond, you know, the, what we can do. So, having given up on the idea of a recovery house is something that's desperately needed in the area, but we're looking at probably other communities because it's just the housing cost in Marquette. I mean, that's one of the reasons that one came to the front, because it was a property that was available. The other thing is, so the rezoning that's being requested would just be to basically bring it to what is being done, what's been used there for many years. I mean, right now, the, the bishop's, excuse me, the bishop's residence is in two portions. So, there's bishop's residence, but there's also three apartments that retired or retired priests, chaplain live in. So, that's, that's in that house. They've been there for many years. The rectory, as part of the cathedral, has three priests living there right now. There's two apartments and a guest space. So, that's also being used by three different people. So, what we're asking right now is just that the rezoning would bring it to, to, back to where it was, you know, to, so that we're not out of spec. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Name and physical address, please.
Jim Dowling, 11 Grohlville Court. I just want to, I guess, expand on John Fee's comments. Of course, he, he just offered the opinion or information that it was a cost of refurbishing the residence that that was, that very well may have been part of the decision to reexamine the use of that building. But I'd like to just add some additional observations that I believe were significant, and that might not be of interest specifically to the City Council on, on, on their voting as far as ordinances and planning commission and issues. But it comes from the Catholic community in the U.P. For generations, Catholics have contributed money to the Diocese that have gone toward establishing a worthy residence for their bishop. And for this particular bishop at this time to decide that that property is to be repurposed for anything is simply a bad decision. And the, the massive negative reaction that the Diocese received on this, I think, was overwhelming and unexpected. And that, I, I believe, is an additional reason that, that, that this was reevaluated. So, again, from, from the parishioners' perspective at the cathedral, massively against this, this idea. It was just a terrible decision. Maybe our bishop was badly advised. I'm not sure. But to repurpose it for anything other than a residence for religious, just is inappropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, comments for the Commission? Three minutes to speak. Name and physical address. Going once. Going twice. Public comment is now closed. Up first, we have our consent agenda. Commissioners, do we have a motion on the consent agenda? Commissioner Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
And do we have a second? Commissioner Hanley?
I second that motion.
Commissioner Bonzal, any discussion? No? No discussion anywhere? I guess I'll just go that route. All right. All in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven to zero. All right. On to unfinished business. Item number two, rezoning of 301 West Barriga Avenue. This will require a roll call vote. City Clerk, could we please have the background?
Thank you, Mayor. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on July 6th, 2021 for the consideration of a request for rezoning of the property at 301 Barriga Avenue for medium-density residential, MDR, to multi, multiple-family residential, MFR. After conducting a public hearing, the following motion was made. It was moved by S. Mittelfelt, seconded by M. Larson, and carried three to two, that after conducting a public hearing and review of the application and staff report for 04-REZ-07-21, the Planning Commission finds that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the Community Master Plan and meets the requirements of the Land Development Code, Section 54.1405, and hereby recommends that the City Commission approve 04-REZ-07-21. Yes votes were from S. Mittelfelt, M. Larson, and J. Cardillo. No votes from W. Primo and E. Brooks. Under procedures in accordance with Section 54.1405 of the Land Development Code, the Planning Commission is offering the recommendation to approve the request to the City Commission for consideration. The City Commission held a public hearing on this request at the August 30th, 2021 meeting in accordance with Section 54.1405 of the Land Development Code, and postponed discussion to this meeting. Fiscal effect, none. Recommendation, following the public hearing, adopt ordinance 701, rezoning 301 West Barriga Avenue as recommended by the Planning Commission, and direct the mayor and city clerk to sign the ordinance. Alternatives, as determined by the Commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. And before we go ahead and take a motion on this, I don't know if we want any more background from staff or if we just want to go ahead with the motion, I think. Looking to the Commission. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, I motion to suspend the rules for discussion.
Okay, do we have a second on that? Mr. Hanley?
I second that.
All in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven to zero. I'm going to turn things over to our City Manager, Karen Kovacs. She may punt it elsewhere, but it sounds like we've got a little bit more information before we proceed on this one.
Yes. So, as we, as we heard, the Diocese is, is not intending to go forward with a halfway house. And it will be, continue to be used as it has been, as those apartments and living quarters for priests and clergyman. And I, I do want to make it clear that if the Diocese had then again changed their mind and wanted to go ahead and have a halfway house or recovery center, they still need to go through a special land use permit process, which is a public hearing at a, at a Planning Commission meeting. Now, because they are going to use, continue using it as it is for those priests' living quarters, it still needs to be rezoned in order to conform with the zoning regulations. So, there still is a need. The request has not been rescinded by the Diocese, so there is some action that, that does need to, to occur. And I don't believe, Dennis, did you have any other things to add to that?
Okay. Thank you, City Manager. Commissioners, any questions before we move into a motion on this item? Mr. Stonehouse?
Your Honor, I'm certainly going to be voting against this item. And I'm going to do so with a couple of different, different points of view, I think, or at least concerns. Every person I've spoken to that's a resident of that neighborhood, all of the correspondence I've received and seen has always been universally against the rezoning. And they've had a variety of reasons for it. But I think we have to take very serious consideration of the value of a neighborhood for many, as opposed to the value of a change for one. And in this instance, I would look at the many as being more important than the one. There certainly are many circumstances when you do rezon property where that one has great value and is really for the common good. In this instance, I certainly don't see that. I understand that the property is non-conforming currently, but I also understand that we have much property in Marquette that is non-conforming. And at the end of the day, it really doesn't make any difference. If we vote against doing this, if we do not accept the, the recommendation from the Planning Commission, then the property will simply continue to be used as it is now. It's just simply non-conforming. No magic happens when it becomes conforming. There's another aspect of it, too, and this takes a little longer view. People can change their mind at any time, and the Diocese certainly can do that. So, the fact that they have said, no, now we're not going to do it in this building, and we go ahead and rezone it, we've just taken a critical step towards the reuse of that building as a halfway house, if they so choose to do so. Because now the pathway doesn't go through the City Commission anymore. The pathway goes directly to the Planning Commission that can take its decision on it, issue the permit for it, and it's essentially a done deal. And I'm not suggesting they're going to do that. I am simply suggesting that circumstances change all the time. We react to change by making change. So, this would be, by voting no on this particular ordinance or this particular issue, we would be able to protect that, that area of Marquette, that neighborhood, just a little bit better. So, that's, that's the basic rationale for my vote. And if anyone has any questions, I think this is a great time to try and discuss those, too. Thank you.
Other Commissioners? Commissioner Hanley?
I do actually have a question. I believe it's for Karen. I, it's to the point of, if we decide not to go forward with this, and they do not become conforming, does anything happen? Is there another step that has to be taken?
I would really, I would turn that over to Dennis, who has a little bit more information on that.
It's working. So, a non-conforming situation, there are two types, Class As and Class Bs. But to make it short with a Class B non-conforming, that's what this would become. The property, if there were something catastrophic that would have happened to it, it would not be allowed to be reconstructed. And also because it is a Class B non-conforming situation, if they ever were going to expand anything with the building, so the number of apartments inside or whatever, they would not be allowed to do that. Also, with a Class B non-conforming building, there are limits on the amount of investment you can make in that building over time because the intent of the ordinance is to eliminate that non-conformity. So, and I don't know what that is off the top of my head, but it, it, it's based upon the assessed valuation of the property and a certain percentage of it. You can't do more than that in any given year with a Class B non-conforming property. A Class A non-conforming situation is where a petitioner can present an appeal to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and they could go to the BZA and say, we would like to have this designation in perpetuity for what it is right now. And then that would allow them to make regular repairs to it outside of the, the formula. It basically allows them to preserve that in perpetuity. But that's only a designation that can be done by the Board of Zoning Appeals, kind of like the zoning court.
Okay. Now, to that, right now, they, they're considering non-conforming right now?
Right now, it is a Class B non-conforming structure.
And it's been that for some time?
Since we discovered...
Okay, so this, we, we just didn't know as a city that this was the issue there?
Correct. Correct. Right. During the process of applying for the rezoning, that's when it was found to be non-conforming.
Okay.
There's a, by our numbers, we have 11 apartments between the cathedral and the bishop's house and, and, you know, combined, so.
And the zoning that we would be looking at for the multifamily, that is exactly what they have right now. It's, it's just actually zoned it.
Yes, that would, that would make it conforming without going to the Board of Zoning Appeals and applying for a Class A non-conforming building in perpetuity. So, that would be, would be done. But as the City Manager said, that, that doesn't preclude them from ever coming back and saying, we changed our mind. Let's go for a special land use. Now, that does receive scrutiny. It's a, it's a public hearing before the Planning Commission. They have to take in a number of considerations, which, of course, is the public comment as well.
Perfect. Thank you, Dennis. Other Commissioners? Protem Hill?
When you say not, sorry, yeah, sorry, Dennis. Just a little, so, if you're non-conforming, tornado comes through. It comes, something happens. When you say not allowed to reconstruct, it's...
Correct.
No building at all, not just not, back to what it was, no building at all?
Yeah, it, because it's a single-family zoning district, they, if they could meet the requirements or the permissions for a single-family zoning district to build a single-family house, they could do that, but they wouldn't be able to recreate the apartments.
Ah, okay. So, they could build a, a single-family house?
And that applies for any non-conformity along the city. You know, if even if you're, you know, if your house gets blown away and it's non-conforming because you're too close to the lot line, well, if you rebuild it, then you have to meet all of the requirements.
Thank you.
Other Commissioners? Questions? Discussion? Commissioner Davis?
I want to follow up with something with Mr. Dowling brought forward, and that is, you know, this is... you know, this is a religious institution that has been there for a lot of years, and the intent of the entire campus is a religious institution, used primarily for religious ceremonies. And so I, you know, maybe it's an interpretation, but the housing of priests seems to be part of that religious institution. You know, and I'm concerned that the changing in zoning opens up other multifamily possibilities. You know, I hear the residents loud and clear in their opposition, and, you know, I think their, their concerns are legitimate and need to be acknowledged, you know, the traffic congestion and the parking for residents and visitors. And Rock Street in particular is a very narrow street and is unable to accommodate much street parking, especially in the wintertime. As I was looking at our materials and I, you know, had asked the Commission to consider criteria, I questioned whether or not moving it to multifamily would meet criteria number eight, which is potential land uses and impacts. This section specifically talks about compatibility with land suitability, density, nature of use, traffic impacts, infrastructure, and the potential influence on property values. And I think that that's part of what we're hearing from the residents. I also don't know if it really meets number nine, the relationship surrounding zoning districts, and whether or not will the construction on the site will be able to meet the dimensional regulations. You know, the intent of the medium-density residential is to establish and preserve medium-density residential neighborhood, and it's important to the community to preserve and enhance pedestrian-friendly, compact neighborhood types. And I think that some of what we've also heard is the importance of place-making and how that part of our community feels as their neighborhood. So, you know, at this point, we don't have any indication of what the residential portion of the property will be used for, and I, you know, maybe this could go back to Dennis. I'm concerned that if it turns into a multifamily, that it could also become a short-term or a long-term rental. And then, in that case, I would be concerned that a religious institution, which are tax-exempt, would be competing with other properties that are taxpayer properties. So I, you know, I'm going to join Commissioner Stonehouse in voting against this.
Other Commissioners? Did you want to ask Dennis that question?
Yeah, maybe, yes.
I really hate to punt on this one, but when we get into taxation and short-term rentals and nonprofits, that's really out of my pay grade. I do know that what I can speak to is, as far as short-term rentals in Marquette, we would be able to determine their eligibility, but I can't do it at this meeting right now. I'd have to meet with the fire department and look at the list and look at which ones are adjacent and how many are on the street and everything like that. So, could it be a possibility? Absolutely, yes, but I can't 100% confirm that.
We can certainly look into whether that, that does affect their tax-exempt status if they're earning revenue based off of a, part of a property. I just can't tell for sure by, without looking at the actual property on that one.
Well, I have to say, I'm probably, I'm struggling on this one. I'm having a hard time making a decision. I think there are good points on both sides, and I think I don't like that it's nonconforming. I'd rather get it conforming, but I also understand that there are additional repercussions for that for the future. City Manager, what would be the impact to the city if we don't approve this?
I think there's a greater, I don't want to say perception, but I don't think monetary, you know, wise or financial wise, it has zero impact on it, but I think that it's just talking about other properties that perhaps come before the Commission for zoning requests and making sure we're evaluating it, or the Commission's evaluating it based on the same criteria that we're evaluating this one. So I think it's just more of a perception-wise and relationship-wise. But as Dennis had said, if there is something that does happen, and we are aware that they are nonconforming, that could play into a part as well, but the exposure, I don't believe is that great, or impact is that great.
Go ahead, Pro Tem. Oh, sorry, was there someone?
Evan was first.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sorry, I was, you know, wait till, for somebody to actually make a motion to share my, my thoughts on this, but I, I mean, as I was studying our materials, I can understand the concerns that have been presented by Commissioners Stonehouse and Davis. However, there, I have to say that I tend to agree on the issue of the rezoning of the property as it's currently being presented to us, which is that if the property is rezoned, that nothing is going to change in the short term. And I think Catholic Social Services and the Church have been very clear that they're, they are no longer planning to have a recovery house at this location, and that they're planning to continue, you know, for the foreseeable future with the current use of the property. I think Dennis was able to describe very clearly the very real and tangible risks and negative impacts that nonconforming land uses have on the community as a whole. And in general, I think it's very important that our zoning code actually reflects the real land uses in the city. Not only does it create a lot of regulatory issues and potential risk for property owners if we have a lot of nonconforming land uses, but it's also, I think, very important for us to make sure that our zoning code is really reflecting the current uses that exist in these properties. And the land uses that were described, just priests living and other, you know, members of the clergy living on a property, that's a multi, that's a multifamily residential use. It's a residential use that has multiple households. And I understand, I guess, I, I worry about the precedent that we may be setting if we say that this is a, and I'm not even sure if that can be considered an exclusively religious land use, given that ultimately these folks are like employees essentially of an organization. Like, would we say if there was a nonprofit that provided onsite housing for its employees, which is kind of similar to this situation, would we say that that, that's not a residential land use? I think that we probably would. So I think that we need to consider that, number one, the proposed use that the city was initially approached about, of a women's recovery house, is off the table at this point. I think that that much is clear. And so to me, I feel that this is actually sort of a, and I understand people's concerns, but I feel that this is sort of a clear decision from a zoning standpoint. It is not a good practice to allow major, you know, nonconforming land uses to continue and to perpetuate if we can avoid it. And at the time, at this time, I mean, it seems there are no plans for, you know, reusing the property for apartments or short-term rentals. As it is, if the Church decided today that they wanted to rent out some of these units as short-term rentals, they couldn't do it because we have been for some time now at the citywide cap of 250 short-term rental units. So, you know, I, I think that we're looking at a whole lot of hypotheticals right now, which seem frankly, like, I think if we look at this from a standpoint of, sort of a common sense standpoint, it seems very unlikely. And I think with regards to concerns about whether this is really fitting in with the neighborhood, I understand that, I mean, I've walked down Rock Street, I walk around this neighborhood quite a lot, and so I appreciate the single-family, the largely single-family character of the neighborhood. But directly across Fourth Street, you have an entire block of multifamily residential. Now, many of those residential units are single-family homes, but it is zoned multifamily residential, and so there could potentially be multifamily uses in any of those homes across Fourth Street. Any of those homes could theoretically be converted into multifamily residences as a permitted land use. So, and some of them are rentals. So I understand people's concerns, but I feel that, especially now that the issue of the women's recovery house has been removed from the equation, and there's an entire separate special land use permitting process for that, if in the very, seems to be a very unlikely event, that the, that Catholic Social Services changes their mind. To me, I feel that we have to trust the Planning Commission's judgment on this, and also to keep in mind that the, I feel that probably the only reason this is a split vote among the Planning Commission was because of the issue of the proposed reuse as a recovery house, not on the merits of this question of whether it should be rezoned to allow this nonconforming use to become conforming.
Other Commissioners? Pro Tem?
Thank you, everyone, and thank you, folks, for coming in and showing your concern about your neighborhood and your community. We are very aware that the decisions that we make impact real people's lives, and we want to make sure that we do that in a very thoughtful way. So we are, we ask that this be brought back to have, that the property owner had a chance to better articulate what they wanted, because there was a lot of confusion at the previous meeting. And now with this understanding, I, I do, I share the concern that setting the precedent that, well, we'll just let it be nonconforming is setting up conditions that really concern me going into the future, given that the property owner in this case is saying that the use has changed and is not going to be. We do have a responsibility to the entire commu, to the entire city as well as the different, different neighborhoods, and having, there could be another situation somewhere else where the nonconforming use, I just don't, I really, I'm very, I'm really struggling with how allowing a nonconforming use in one neighborhood wouldn't mean that we would have to let it happen in another neighborhood. And so I, I'm, and I, at the same time, as I said, I really appreciate that the community is, in this particular set of blocks, is really thinking about what the future's going to be where they live, and that I certainly applaud. And it sounds like there may be better communication with everyone going forward, one of those unintended consequences of something like this happening. So, but I, I really don't see how I can support the entire city with a nonconforming, to vote for nonconforming.
Mr. Hanley?
My question is about the building itself. The church was built not that long ago, the new rectory, I want to say 15 years ago, maybe 20. Why is this nonconforming? I don't understand, like, we had to have done permits, there's clear apartments in these buildings, like, it's not, I've been in there, my uncle was a priest there for many years, like, I don't understand how this was nonconforming in the first place, if that could be addressed?
Sorry, but that one predates my time here. That was built before 20 years ago, so, and there could be, you know, without going back and doing the research on that, it, it could have been conforming at one point in time, but as the ordinances change over time, as we just saw with the, the Old Pizza Hut's a great example, because they've recently been in here, that property changed its zoning designation because a new ordinance was adopted and a new zoning map was adopted, and then that property became nonconforming for the use that they wanted to subsequently use it for, for the marijuana consumption facility, so.
Other Commissioners? Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess I need to clarify one thing as well from our last meeting when I voted on this, because I received quite a few emails thanking me for voting no. I guess I just need to clarify, and just being transparent, that I was voting no to Mayor Pro Tem's motion to postpone this to this meeting because I didn't see the reason to, because me looking at this, I was looking at this specific item, knowing, as our City Manager has pointed out, that the recovery house would be a whole other topic of discussion that would, could possibly happen in theory after this. So just looking at this, I'm just looking at this as a property in our city that's nonconforming, trying to be in compliance. And that's, that was the only reason why I voted no on that motion last time, because I just didn't see the point in postponing it. So personally, I will be voting in favor of bringing it back in compliance with our code. Thank you.
Other Commissioners? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, let me ruminate just for a second, if I can. First time I ran for public office, I walked every street in Marquette. I knocked on every house door, and it took me literally a summer and a part of a fall to be able to do that. But the big thing I took away from that was all of the neighborhoods in this city, and how different they are, and how powerful they are, how compact, how people have a sense of community right in that neighborhood. And this is an example of that, this community that we're talking about trying to impact tonight. I learned that the city is literally a city of neighborhoods, whether you're on the east side, the south side, wherever, there's a neighborhood that's around you. That's where people raise families, that's where people live with their families, that's where they've invested their lives. And when we go in and take a, make a zoning change that impacts that neighborhood, that is not what government should be doing. Government has the mission to protect our people, to protect our neighborhoods. Simply because one property says, "We want to change," and that has the impact of spiraling out and affecting like an oil drop the surrounding neighborhood, is wrong. And it may be a church, and it may be part of the Diocese of Marquette, but what they want to do is wrong. The property is nonconforming. If we do nothing, the earth will keep going, the sun will rise tomorrow. It has no practical impact. I realize if the building burns down, they can't rebuild it. That's a rather unlikely possibility. If it's hit by lightning, they probably can't restore it to the original shape that it's in now. That's not a bad thing either. Maybe it's urban renewal, and they're going to build something new. That's a decision that would be made at that time. If we are trying to chase every piece of nonconforming property in Marquette, somehow thinking we are making the city better by eliminating these pieces of property, that's wrong, and it also has no practical value to the city of Marquette in the main. It's not a big issue. It's a big issue in this case because it affects people, and the surrounding neighborhood says, "We're important, too, not just this part of the Diocese of Marquette." And that's again why I will be voting to deny this request. Thank you for the opportunity, Your Honor.
Commissioner Davis?
You know, one of the things that makes life interesting is there's always something that doesn't fit into the rules. And this isn't even about trying to fit a square peg into a round hole, it's more like it doesn't fit into either of them. I don't know if it's a parallelogram or something, but it's, it's an outlier. It's an outlier that's been around for a long time. You know, and I use the example of, well, it could be a short-term rental or a long-term rental, and, okay, I know the short-term rental, we have, we have different rules for that, but if this were to be zoned as a multifamily, there's clearly, part of the permitted principal uses is a dwelling, multifamily. It doesn't need to go before the zoning, and it doesn't need any special land use, but it could be turned into a multifamily home. I don't, you know, there's three major apartments that could be, you know, the priest could move out and we could have other people move in. There's a beautiful home with eight bedrooms and five bathrooms that could fit a lot of college students or somebody who wants to pay rent. So I think that that's where some of the concern is for this community, for this little group of houses that have struggled to remain single-family residential.
Any other comments from the Commission? Commissioner Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, and again, I really appreciate, first of all, everybody's willingness to show up to a second, the second of two, you know, pretty lengthy discussions about this from, from the residents in the neighborhood. You know, I, I love the Rock Street neighborhood. I went to the Rock Street block party. I have a lot of friends that live in the area, but I think that we're really making a mountain out of a molehill with this one, to be honest. I kind of agree with Commissioner Mayor, you know, I think Commissioner Stonehouse noted that, well, if we don't rezone it to bring this into compliance with our, the current land use there into compliance with our zoning ordinance, that nothing will change. Well, if we do, nothing will change. I mean, the, does anybody know a single church that rents out? I mean, does anybody know a single church that rents out apartments for profit to people? I mean, I, maybe they exist, but I don't, I'm not familiar with one. You know, I think that, you know, we can play this hypothetical, you know, we can continue to talk about the hypotheticals, but we routinely rezone properties for non-conforming land uses as best we can under our current land development code. And given the fact that it is essentially being used as a multifamily residence right now, granted for members of the clergy, but that is the current and historic use of the property. I, again, I agree with my, those of my colleagues, you know, who feel that, you know, really, as much as we may have some concerns about hypothetical potential reuses of the property, it seems extremely unlikely that any of those land uses beyond the ones that we're currently looking at could come into being without, now, of course, there are special land uses within each zoning district, such as a recovery house in multifamily residential. And that's going to require an entire separate process, where there's going to be another public hearing, plenty of opportunity for public input, neighbors will be notified. And as I think Mayor Protem Hill noted, if any future changes happen with the use of this property, I think everybody has learned the lesson that we need to communicate better with the neighbors and with the parishioners, with folks who send their kids to the school every day nearby. And so I think people will be much more proactive about that in the future. But right now, I think our choice is, do we do what we routinely do with non-conforming properties for a good reason, as Dennis explained earlier? Or do we not? I have a real hard time understanding. I understand the concerns about the recovery house. I understand the concerns about some hypothetical potential reuses, but I don't see it as being dramatically different from other rezoning to bring non-conforming properties into compliance that we have approved without much discussion in the past.
Other commissioners? Should we go ahead and take a vote?
Do we have to make a motion first?
No.
Vote call. It's a vote call. Yes, we do have to make a motion, is what I meant to say. I'm sorry. That's what I meant to say. I just wanted to add, you know, even before hearing the commission speak, after I talked about being on the fence, my leniency was to support the motion that the Planning Commission had supported, even though they voted, knowing there was going to be a recovery house there. I would have to agree with Commissioner Bonzel that I think if, this would have just been to get a property into compliance, that they likely would have voted to support that. And, you know, I think part of our role here on the commission is to support what the Planning Commission does unless it doesn't make sense. And I certainly understand both sides of this argument. And I think part of the thing that makes this the most difficult for me is seeing the public here that is not in support of this. We don't often get a lot of folks out here to talk about these issues, so it, you know, it just really does make me think twice, and it made me kind of second-guess myself. And I just want you to know that you coming does have an impact on us and our decision-making. But I do intend to support this rezoning after thinking it through some, and that's kind of where I was leaning. And that is what I thought I was going to do before I came in here tonight and saw you guys and had you come up and speak. So that's where I'm at. I think we will go ahead and have a motion and take a vote. Commissioners, do we have any motion on item number two? Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that we adopt ordinance 701, rezoning 301 West Berge Avenue, as recommended by the Planning Commission, and direct the mayor and city clerk to sign the ordinance.
And do we have a second on that motion? Commissioner Mayor?
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Commissioner Bonzel, any further discussion?
I would only say that, again, I thank everybody for showing up. And I think that, you know, for those who had initial concerns about this whole rezoning process, you know, the end result here is very different from, I think, the end result that everybody was concerned about at the beginning. You know, the recovery house isn't going to be happening at the site, and the practical effect, if the commission votes to approve this motion, on folks' daily lives in the neighborhood for the foreseeable future is nil. I'd be happy to stay after and talk with folks. You know, I'll stick after for a while, and I appreciate everybody making their voices heard over the last few weeks.
Commissioner Mayor, you made the second correct. Do you have any discussion?
I think between all of us commissioners, every point I would make has been said at some point, Your Honor.
Any other discussion, comments? Commissioner Davis?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring out that even at the Planning Commission and at our last meeting, I didn't just hear recovery house. I heard multifamily, and the density, and the traffic. And I think that those are very legitimate concerns. It's not just, we all know the recovery house is out of the picture, but there are other uses for multifamily that could easily be part of this.
Any other commissioners? All right. City clerk, could we please have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Bonzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
No.
Commissioner Handley?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
No.
Mayor Protem Hill?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Motion passes five to two. All right, we moved item three to the end of the meeting, so we will now go to our second public comment session of the night. If you'd like to address the commission, please approach the podium. You have three minutes to speak. Name and physical address, please. Go ahead.
Heather Holdwick, 521 West Berge. I just wanted to conclude my comments from earlier. I am aware that the city is very aware of my problem, the whole city problem. It's interesting to have you guys talking about a neighborhood just now, because that's really what I need, is I need my neighborhood back. I need to be able to walk from my house. I have two dogs that are very identifiable. I couldn't get home that day without walking through the park where there were homeless people. I couldn't walk around Sixth Street, because they were down at the gas station. I can't walk to my house safely right now. I'm driving a mile away to do my walks. My neighborhood is what has kind of been forgotten by the shelter, not necessarily by the city. You guys are doing, you're cutting back trees, you're removing brush. You are doing things to make it safer. I don't know what impact you have on the shelter and their staff, and whether you can ask them to start doing more things to watch their residents. But, you know, for me, to not be able to walk from my house is just not acceptable. And my neighbors, we all need to be safer. You know, kids need to be safer. You need to go to the park and not, you know, see people drunk and stumbling and sleeping under the trees. So I would appreciate that, if you guys have any influences on the shelter and their supporters, any of their board members, you know, just remember the neighborhood, the neighborhood that lives within a few blocks of the shelter, the neighborhood that lives along the bike path for like a mile in either direction. You know, remember those neighborhoods, since we're, you know, been talking about neighborhoods today. Just remember our neighborhoods, too, please. Thank you.
Anyone else's public comment for the commission?
Going once, going twice. Public comment is now closed. We will now move into comments from the commission. It's a little bit out of order, because we still have an agenda item here. We'll start things off with Mayor Protem Hill.
Thank you. What, I think what I'll say is, this, we certainly recognize that we have a housing problem in our community, in our region, and there are, there's a wide, it's a complicated knot, and there's a wide set of solutions to be brought to that issue. There's also a significant mental health and recovery deficit in our community, and it starts with our young people and goes from there. And I hope, and will be working, to make sure that we have more resources for our community members, particularly for the youth, so they can feel connected and not have the need to go and lose themselves in substances, and not feel the connection with other people that's a healthy connection. It's, it is very disappointing when you can't feel like you're safe. I have lived in neighborhoods myself where that is the case, and I know well that feeling of carrying your keys in your hand, so that you can feel like, if something happened, you're ready. I hear you. And I think that the problem is, we were able to serve the number of people who were having troubles in our community, and post-COVID, we don't have those resources right now. There are more people who are in more trouble. And I really think we need, there needs to be a regional response that involves healthcare and mental health and the police, and there's, but, and it's going to start with, we're just going to need to start having more housing in our community. It's changed with, after COVID. That's what I'm going to say about that, and thank you for raising that question. The arts awards happened yesterday. They were a wonderful celebration, and thank you, congratulations, thank you to the Arts and Culture Staff, and congratulations to the 10 winners. It was a really fun, wonderful event out at Marquette Mountain. And I say, as we're entering into the fall, just please be, please, if you, if you're wondering about getting a vaccine, if you're concerned about how the vaccine might impact you, know that there are resources that could help you with finding a place to get a shot. I, myself, had very, very few after-effects and was able to go to work both times the next day. So, well, I got my shots on Saturday, had the day off, and then I went back to work on Monday. So I strongly encourage folks to get vaccinated. It is our safest path to getting fully back to normal. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
No further comment, Your Honor.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, I was certainly much taken by the citizen who talked to us about the safety issues that she's been facing. And I think we all have to own up to the fact, we have to have room at the inn, frankly, own up to that problem. They have to own it. That's where we know it's coming from, that there's certainly probably a criminal element that's involved in that, and I'm not trying to be conspiracy there. But it's how well that they could sort it out, how they could have a zero tolerance when that type of activity is carried on by people that they are supporting. I never thought I'd see the day when a resident of the city of Marquette got up and said, "I don't feel safe walking in my neighborhood." That is an incredible admission, not only for the neighbor, but certainly for the city to have to face up to. So I know we've got Chief Blake here and whatever resources he can throw at that problem. And we all understand that there's not enough mental health money, there's not enough alcohol treatment money, there's not enough of the social services money that we should have, we should have, the county should have, to be able to deal with it. But in the meantime, you can't excuse it. You can't just say, "This is, business is normal. This is what it is. We have to deal with it." No, it isn't. We have to take the action that's necessary to make our streets and our bike paths safe for the people who live here and those we may have come visit us. Thank you very much, Your Honor.
Commissioner Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, and I would just want to say thank you for coming and sharing your concerns with us. And I apologize if you contacted me and I didn't get back with you. I don't, maybe I missed the, I think you said you emailed the commission. I may have missed it, but I'll look through and try and find it and get back with you, and I'd be happy to talk more. But I think that Mayor Protem Hill and Commissioner Stonehouse both raised very important points, that this is a real serious homelessness in general, is a very serious problem in not just Marquette, but across the country. And we need to figure out a long-term solution. You know, I think, you know, as you noted, ma'am, during your public comment, like, there doesn't seem to be an easy solution, and I think that's what we're struggling with here, is we, I mean, I agree with Commissioner Stonehouse. It is very troubling to me, especially given that we pride ourselves in being a small, safe, you know, inclusive community, that when any of our residents says that they don't feel safe walking their dogs, or, you know, sending their kid alone to bike to the beach, I mean, that's, that's a very serious problem that we need to, we need to take care of. At the same time, you know, I feel that this is actually illustrating the fact that the warming center, as a, you know, an emergency shelter, is really just the first step in what needs to be a much more comprehensive, multi-step solution to homelessness in the community. And the reality is, as the, you know, ad hoc Housing Committee found, when we were putting together our report on housing in Marquette, that number one, housing affordability is a big problem in the community, one of the biggest problems that we're facing. Number two, that there's a particular shortage of permanent supportive housing for folks who are difficult to house. I imagine some of the folks that you've had interactions with would probably fall into that category. And so we need more resources to make sure these people are getting the services that they need and not having these negative interactions as a community. You know, at the same time, the existence of the warming center, perhaps not in this specific neighborhood, but in the community as a whole, there is data that suggests that actually there were, community-wide, throughout the whole city, there were more interactions between law enforcement and homeless individuals before the shelter was open during the summer, before the transition to a permanent shelter than after. And I think that that is pointing us in the right direction, that we need more services for folks, and that that's ultimately going to be the long-run solution. I think right now, we're in this uncomfortable and really, frankly, tragic, you know, middle ground, and we need to keep moving forward. So, I'm sorry, I don't, I want to be honest with everybody. I don't have an easy solution for you, but I really commend the, our police department, who seems to be, you know, they're doing the absolute best that they can in very difficult circumstances. And I also agree that we need to be working with Room at the Inn to make sure we're getting on top of this problem. But it's going to be a process, and it will take time.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes, Heather, I just wanted to let you know that your message and your delivery were very powerful. I think Commissioner Stonehouse and Commissioner Bonzel have said enough about it, but thank you so much for bringing it to our attention once again, and that is all I have.
Commissioner Handley?
I think I'm good for the night. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Holdwick. I'm not sure if you recognize me, but my kids go to daycare right next door, so I know exactly where you are, and I've definitely seen that firsthand. It is impactful to have you here and speak at both public comment sessions and really talk about your experience. I know you had emailed me. I had responded. I did get a response from the city manager, and I just wanted to summarize that our city manager and our police department are trying to come up with some additional strategies, but I would agree that there are no fast and easy solutions here. Some of the things that we have been looking into and will continue looking into are some county mental health services, working with Room at the Inn, and really working with them and asking them to take a more proactive approach on their policies for the individuals that they serve. So I would encourage you to keep reaching out and let us know when things happen, and we can continue to try to make things better. It might not happen quickly, but we are listening, and I really do appreciate you coming this evening. Thank you. Beyond that, I don't have anything else to comment on at this point in time. I will see if our city manager has any comments, and then we will move into closed session after that.
I just want to piggyback off that last message about working with Room at the Inn and working with our police department. That is, unfortunately, a conversation we've been having and we continue to have quite frequently, and are, I'm incredibly impressed that our police department has already been attending some of these board meetings for Room at the Inn. And we are trying to encourage them to have a more proactive approach. However, just as we are here, they are, they have to follow boards' decisions, and their board has strict decisions on their policies, and I'm not trying to make excuses or trying to pass the buck along, but we can only do so much by enforcing our, you know, our rules and laws. But really, that change has to come from their programming, and as much as we try to encourage them and try to be a resource for them, there might need to be a little bit more. So I do encourage you to continue to, you know, report these things and start looking at maybe trying to have a presence as well in front of their board, too. And we can certainly talk about that some other time. So, thank you for having the courage to come up here and say that. And we can certainly talk about that some other time. So thank you for having the courage to come up here and say those things and email us. I also wanted to, to kind of reiterate the arts awards. Unfortunately, I missed it this year. I'm looking forward to making it next year. I did have a little bit of a glimpse from some of the pictures that people had taken. It looks like an excellent event. So congratulations on those winners, and I, I look forward to next year. Thank you.
All right, we will go ahead and move into closed session. So unfortunately, I'll have to ask members of the public to go ahead and leave. As we've rearranged our agenda, we won't have any more action items this evening. And our closed session is pursuant to MCL 15 dot 268C for a strategy session with regard to the negotiation of collecting collective bargaining agreements. This is item number three, closed session.
Do you believe we need a motion?
We, we need a motion to go into closed session.
Okay, I will do that as soon as our Protem returns. I guess, do we need her to return? I guess we can get a motion. All right, who would like to make a motion? Commissioner Hanley?
A motion that we move to closed session.
And we have a second. Commissioner Mayor?
Second.
All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, please say no. Motion passes six zero.